I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have roll call. David Bova here, Eric Bosler.
Here.
Jerelyn Diesel.
Here.
James Kirchner.
Here.
Jamie Bulu.
Here.
Joshua Gettiger.
Here.
Martha Reeseinger.
Here.
Next, we have the Board of Education norms available for review. And next, we have the approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda in May seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two, right here at our meeting session. Second.
A motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the MSBA Monthly Report.
Yes.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of May. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at cybersecurity issues facing our schools. Cyber attacks on schools in Missouri and throughout the nation are on the increase. They include ransomware, data breaches, and what's known as denial of service when cyber attackers flood a school district's network with messages that can crash a school district's technology system. It's a serious problem for school districts that are increasingly dependent on technology for teaching, learning, and administrative functions. Bob Klosmeyer is an education safety coordinator for MSBA's Center for Education Safety, and he says school districts are often targets for cyber attacks because of the large amount of data they store. He adds, "It's critical for school district technology staff to keep current on cybersecurity threats that are becoming more sophisticated."
These systems are advancing so fast, and the attackers are a step ahead of everyone. They need to be updated on everything and well-educated in that area. So that commitment and investment and focus on that cybersecurity infrastructure is important, is vital, to keeping these schools safe.
Klosmeyer says cybersecurity should be a part of a school district's overall school safety plan.
Because your cybersecurity element is very much a part of your emergency operation plan. And so we offer a tool to help develop those plans, but there's also an annex on that cybersecurity element that would build those procedures to follow in terms of protecting, you know, both preventing and responding to a cyber attack.
You can contact MSBA's Center for Education Safety for resources related to cybersecurity and many other school safety issues. Missouri is home to two active-duty military bases, Whiteman Air Force Base near Nobnoster and Fort Leonardwood near Waynesville. Educating the children of the many military families stationed at those bases poses some unique challenges, including frequent moves as well as deployments. First Lady Jill Biden and U.S. Secretary of Education Miguel Cardona visited Whiteman Air Force Base and the Nobnoster School District in April, designated as the Month of the Military Child. Cardona told an audience, including students of military families, they face challenges different from other students, and praised school districts such as Nobnoster for providing them with the support they need to be successful in school.
As Americans, we must never allow the sacrifice of our military families to sacrifice the quality of education available to their children. I'm honored to be here with you, recognizing Month of the Military Child, and I'm humbled and inspired by your work day in and day out.
A military child can expect to move six to nine times between kindergarten and the end of high school. MSBA's Igniting Great Ideas Summit is set for June tenth through twelfth in St. Charles. This event features a wide range of topics and speakers related to school board leadership and current issues facing boards of education. We'll also be holding our June Delegate Assembly at the summit, when delegates will be electing statewide officers for the coming year. Every MSBA member board is entitled to have at least one voting delegate at the Delegate Assembly, and we urge your school board to be represented at this important meeting. You can watch video interviews with the candidates for state office posted on the MSBA website. Registration information on the Igniting Great Ideas Summit is posted on the MSBA website. If your school district is interested in sharing some of your outstanding programs and practices with other school districts in the state, now's the time to submit a proposal to present at the 2022 MSBA Annual Conference to be held November third through sixth in Kansas City. Concurrent sessions will be held on Friday, November fourth, and Saturday, November fifth. The deadline for submitting a proposal to present at the 2022 Annual Conference is Friday, May twenty-seventh. Check the MSBA website for more details. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
All right. Next, we have approval of the consent agenda items.
I make the motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and respond appropriately by mail or telephone at a later date. Per policy, BDDH dash one, public participation at board meetings. The following guidelines and procedures will be followed. In order to speak during public participation, a public comment form must be filled out and submitted to the board president. Prior to the beginning of the meeting, the public comment period will not exceed fifteen minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once, and each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. I do not have any comment cards.
I do not either.
All right. Next, we have report of the superintendent.
Thank you. The first thing that I wanted to remind everyone about is not actually on the agenda, but our last day of school for this school year is Friday, May twenty-seventh. It will be an early-out day, so the students will be released at 1:00 P.M. Of course, if you're a senior like Paul and Drew here, their last day technically is tomorrow in the classroom. Finals? Finals tomorrow? Yes. They can handle it. And then Thursday, senior barbecue, Friday, graduation practice, and then I'll mention graduation practice, but I figured Dr. Boyd's going to talk about it a little bit more. There is a note of appreciation. Okay. There is a note of appreciation in your packet. Graduation, I just put this on here for anyone who's looking at board docs and the presentation and/or the presentation. Graduation is this Saturday, May twenty-first, in the Peggy J. Johnson Gymnasium. We will have the Performing Arts Center open for overflow. Our people who would like a more comfortable seat.
Will bring the graduates through the.
Yes. And before the graduation ceremony begins, we will project it up on the stage at the pack. The graduates walk through the Performing Arts Center for people to take pictures. Doors open at 7:00 P.M. Ceremony begins at eight. Lots of excitement. I think with Bailey Otto's help, I finished my graduation speech. She finished it up today with the right pauses. Principal reports. Mrs. Zuespin, you are up. You just want to tell me? Okay. I figured you'd mind. Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
May has been a month of fun and celebrations, but we are also learning up to the last minute. I walked around the day. Fifth grade was getting ready for social studies tests. Third grade, Lewis Hager, and then the second grade is still learning, have some time. So we are still learning. Okay, on the first slide. We had our PTO spring carnival, two Saturdays ago. A seven. And it was a good turnout. Our PTO this year is one of the ones. It backed up to Betty's Color Run, and that brought a lot of trust from the carnival, but we had a really good night of carnival afterwards. We had base game, games, we had the bounce house, we had fifty-one drum, and we had a few. Betty's Color Run, we had a big participation, and there were over like one hundred and thirty runners. But we had a run club that led up to this. We had forty students in that running club. And the running club met for seven weeks, and it wasn't just about running. It was about goal-setting and kindness and courage. Each week, the teachers did a lesson for where they did the running outside, so that encouraged them to run. And then we got donations from the community and people wore shirts. And we raised four thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars in scholarships for the scholarship. So that's a stage we want to thank the community for participation. Next slide was, we had preschool graduation. This was our largest preschool graduating class. We had nineteen students graduating, almost all twenty. I think we have two students coming back, which has a couple part-time kids. So we only have two coming back next year, and we have a lot of three-year-olds next year. And the next slide, we had a kindergarten celebration. They did EIOs. And I told them that this was the best year. We could actually understand everything they were saying. We've had a lot of fun, and the parents were looking forward to it. We also had a look at the square gates in there, so it was fun as well. Next slide. We always have a fifth-grade mixer with St. John Elementary students, and that was this past Friday. They went to the community center, and they made a look for the St. John Elementary students. Ms. Roland said that that was the best group yet, so she wanted me to compliment them. And then we had kindergarten buddy day. We had about seven students per class showed up that day. And then we dispersed the preschool students in on other days because we didn't want like forty students in classrooms because we have a big now, we've got kindergarten next year. And then we had Right to Learn Award winners. I was going to read their names because that's a pretty good deal. The teachers look at their writings all year long, and then they submit a writing at the end of the year. And then we have a ceremony with certificates, and they get it all broken into shirts. So for pre-k, it was Robert Shaker and Louis Gilbert. For kindergarten, Rodney Cooper, Amanda Perkins, Katie Pat, Jameson Mill, Lily Schwinn, Sammy Zuccarello. First grade, Fiona Gilbert, Malia Terry, Connor Wiener, Irishman, Connor Williams, Savannah Chark. Second grade, Lala Jokers, Lily Braun, Robyn Zuespin, Heather Lewis, Mia Stoll, Addison Payne. Third grade, Kinsley Blue, Casey Carlson, Jackson Brown, Zelena Sanceese, Wayne Cleveland, Colton Bar, Lydia Verdinka, and Madison Snapper. Fourth grade, Isabella Weiss, Nolan Wolf, Grace Conwell, Tessa Schutz. Fifth grade, Claire Diesel, Sophia Cropper, Noah Alshon, Malia Bates, and Henry Go, and Jackson Bur. Super proud of it. And then the next slide. We had the art show all last week, and when we had events, parents would come in and vote. Miss Cooper does an amazing job. She hangs them all up, and then she even has a QR code that you can vote on your own, and it tells all the votes were. So she'll announce the winners next week. Then Ms. Roland does a first-grade bakery. It's like a career lesson that she does over a couple months with first-grade students, and she teaches them about the career, like what they can be when they grow up, what it takes to run a bakery. They had to come up with a design, and they had to come up with ideas. And each first-grade class got to do something different. Miss Leader's class had a cupcake magnet. It was Cupcake Madness. They came up with the name, made posters with them, and they sent out flyers to buy cupcakes. And they raised money for St. Jude's Hospital. They raised four hundred and six dollars and thirty-four cents. That was like the best gift. And then Miss Ryan's class was Sweet Peeps, and they had peeps with cookies because it was right around Easter. Well, we have to say it on the face of it. They raised a hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety cents for Blue Dale PTO. And this, this buyer's donut shop, they were raising money for St. John Memorial Hospital on the way. And they raised a hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. And a couple board members came and helped and shopped that day, so thank you so much. Kids get sold, so I did about a bakery hit. And then we had some positive officer girls. I did put the picture up there, but I didn't want to read their names. Dusty Wagner, Clayton Webb. And then we had a situation where we had a medical emergency on the bus. And I have five positive officer girls for those students because they helped hold the student's head and gave water and took his backpack off of him. They were just like little mother parents taking care of him. So that was Christina Miles, Mackenzie Lindsay, Leah Lindsay. And then Blaine Roberts was the student sent to the side, and he's wanted help by the bus driver. And then Serena Betke. And then we had Kaylee Farlow. Her nomination said that they really can't pick one habit. She displays all habits every day of the year. So the PTO was really proud of her. So that was it. Good evening.
Good evening.
On the left there, we have three pictures from our pre-k to family fun night. It was a beach theme, and all of our literacy and math stations were sort of tied to a beach or an ocean theme. We had, I believe, when we tallied our attendance, almost four hundred people in attendance that night, and it was just pre-k to. So it was very well-attended. On the rest of the slide, in the middle, we have our fabulous PTO put on the Me and My Gal Dodgeball and the Me and My Guy Dance events. The high school graciously allowed us to use their gym to host these events. They were very well-attended. At the top, in the left-hand corner, this is one of our pictures from Hour of Code. We did not do ours back in December or January. Blue Dale did ours, or theirs. We did ours at the end of April during the lead time, and all students, no matter their age, their grade, or their ability, participated. And the students pictured there are in Mrs. Herman's class, and Mrs. Herman programmed one of the B-bots. And I didn't put the video in there, but they send the B-bot on its journey after they coded it, and it knocks down the dominoes a lot like if you've been watching Domino Masters on TV. It was pretty cool. At the bottom left, we have two pictures from the mini-fair. The high school Boag students put on a mini-fair for our first and second grade students. They had different carving holes on display and different aspects of, I guess, agricultural life, and the kids enjoyed that. On the top middle, we have our fifth-grade mixer. That is a hard picture to see, but that is next year's sixth-grade crew. It's a mixture of Blue Dale and St. John's Elementary combined. And then the other four pictures, oh, and the top right is a picture where Mrs. Roland and Mrs. Herman had a collaborative station set up where they had to work together to put a puzzle together. And the bottom right are our field day pictures. On May sixth, our field day was canceled due to rain and inclement weather, so it was postponed until May eleventh. We ended up having a little schedule this afternoon, but we worked it out. They started going. And on top of it, it turned out to be a record-setting heat day. So we had to make all sorts of arrangements, and we had to shift, and we had to modify. And you can see a bunch of third, fourth, and fifth-grade students, or teachers had them prepared. They brought beach towels, and they lined the visitor's side of the football field, and they got into shape that afternoon. So we were able to enjoy a really good field day despite the heat. Okay, on the left, we have our preschool graduates at the bottom. And at the top, we have our two early childhood classes, Mrs. Ayler's and Mrs. Mull's class. This was a very large graduating class. The top two classes, all of their ages and their parents, they came, and they made sure that every student was able to participate to their fullest ability. And one of the early childhood and preschool teachers quoted that it was the best example of inclusion they had seen thus far. And so I was backstage, and I got to see it all happen, and those ladies were doing whatever it took to make sure that those kids could participate. Then in the top right-hand corner, we have our second quarter at the leaders' celebration. I just put one picture up there, but again, we had all of our third and fourth-quarter talent leaders. They came to the ceremony, and they were honored, and then they were able to take their pictures. And a lot of the half-hour kindergarten music performance. They were dressed in different costumes per class because they did the musical When I Grow Up. And so in the left picture there, we have some superstars, and you can see the girls in their umbrellas and the guys in their top hats and suits. And then we have plumbers. We had bankers. We had cowboys. But it was a really good production, and Mrs. Mull did a good job of that. And this slide right here, it's just a variety of field trips. We're super excited that after two years, we're able to take field trips again. So the teachers and students are taking full advantage, and I'm not having a hard time telling them, no. We decided we're going to upgrade that a little bit next year. But in the top left-hand corner, we have our kindergarten crew. They took a walking field trip to the Learning Museum downtown. On the top right, we have the first-grade students went to the firehouse. They received a tour of the firehouse and the trucks and the fire station. And then there on the right in the middle, first grade put on some safety presentations today. And that's our very own Ursbecky. She's talking to the students about sun and hats and clothing and applying sunscreen. And then in the bottom left-hand corner, there are two pictures where our second-grade students got to visit the Pink Conservation Center. And then on the right, there are two photos from where our third-grade students took a walking field trip downtown. They visited one of the historic homes. I believe it was the Great Tree Tavern. And then they went to Sarah's Ice Cream, and they also visited the Learning Museum. Fourth grade, their field trip got canceled to somebody in the orchestra due to COVID that was spreading in the orchestra. So they have scheduled a new field trip, and they will be taking that. And then fifth grade was actually in the Learning Museum today, but I didn't have an opportunity to get that in there. And then we have a few positive officer girls from the top row, left and right. Michael Rattlin, Cinderella Kelly, Clayton Hook, Laura Roth, Hazel Scoggan, and Nadine Niger. These students continue to do great things. They're being great in class. They're setting examples for others. But I did want to point out, Clayton Hook in the top row, he received his positive officer girl from the bus driver because she notified the school that he had actually, her words, saved his brother's life that morning. His younger brother had ran out in front of the bus and was about ready to go into oncoming traffic. And Clayton Rattlin stood and pulled him back, so the bus driver wanted to recognize him for being attentive and taking care of his brother. And then finally, we have our teacher teacher and super staff winners. I believe these were from April. We have Mrs. Sarah Roth, who is a second-grade teacher. Just a few things that were said about her, that she makes students' education her top priority. She ensures that students are engaged in learning. She has phenomenal relationships with all the students. She strives to help each student be successful. Her class laughs and learns together, and we're in love with her students in school, and teaching shines bright. Then we have Mrs. Kara Hurst. She's an early childhood parent professional. They said she was very hard and sweet and patient with all the little and even the adults, too. She has a calming demeanor that makes others feel at home. She's hardworking and dedicated. She works well with all students, knows how to talk to students in difficult situations. She accommodates the needs of all students, and she cares so much about every student and faculty member, and her job is the first priority. And I mean that, it's a simple truth.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Lots of information to cover, just like the ladies have already said, so let's just jump right in. On the left-hand side, top and bottom, you have a local school band concert and choir concert. And I think this is a great opportunity for me to tell you how much I appreciate getting to work, not only in the district, but in the community that still supports the arts. That's something that's very important to me, especially those of you that have known me for a long time, know that I'm a music worker, that I'm a theater fellow. And it's very important to me that we continue to instill these things in our students. Important life lessons, important skills, important hobbies that can go with them for the rest of their lives. So I want to thank you for that very much. On the right-hand side, we have a collage of pictures from our students who participated in the Kladius Project at St. Louis University High School. The Kladius Project, if I can just remind you, it is a guided season of STEM-related challenges that schools work on in junior high school and try to master those challenges. And then at the end of the season, all of those schools come together, as is pictured here. In our case, it was about twenty-seven, twenty-eight schools. And they perform those challenges live with their laptops and their LED-free Lego robots. So while we were there, we took seven teams, and each team consists of two students. And really, I'm saying, it's really Mr. Roth. He let me tag along, so I can see how much fun it is. Mr. Roth took seven teams of two students. And when they perform their challenge, they get a score, and then they can go back to their table, workshop, learn from their mistakes, retool things that they need to, and then go attempt the challenge as many times as is necessary in order to master it. By the end of the day, two of our teams, we had four students, four students, got a team perfect scores on every challenge that was available in that two days, and that was fruitful. Very impressive group of individuals, and very impressive to see Mr. Roth coordinating that, teaching those guys, maybe. Very, very fun. Next, let's talk about some of our dragons on fire. In my case, we're going to have two slides for you tonight for dragons on fire. Only had a few pictures available, but I wanted to make sure that each student was recognized, as I know you. Those students from this month are Oliver Toggers, Olivia Kirchner, Eli Bennett, Lily Meener, Jason Abel, Colton Roth, who received two this month, Yanni Johnson, and Jeff Roman. And here's something exciting for you. You guys have heard me talk a few different times this year about the ultimate dragon. Those students that received positive officer girl that falls under all three of the pillars, family, tradition, and excellence. Before tonight, we had two, but over the last month, we have added three more. So we've had five, and the new ones are Eli Bennett, Cecilia Rooney, and Colton Roth. So congratulations to those guys. And I want to let you know that we took those students out to lunch today at the American Festival Company. Had a great time to sit and visit with those guys and also support a local business. And just let these young, these young people know how much we appreciate their efforts. They're great folks, and they deserve to be recognized. Our spotlight this month goes to Tina Hook. She received multiple nominations. As you can imagine, this time of year, with so many extra activities that are taking place and with some of our teachers holding extracurricular positions, there are times that they may be out doing those things. And so subbing has become sort of a tricky proposition. As everybody knows, we need good subs, but we also need a good sub coordinator. And that's what Tina has excelled in all year long, but especially recently, since we've been so busy. You know, I'm very fortunate in my position that I often get to be the face and the voice of St. John Elementary Middle School, but the brain's in the heart like people like Tina Hook. And her employees in the building have recognized that, and nature of the spotlight, her way. So congratulations to Tina. So a lot of things that we've been up to, we did have our NGHS induction. We also had our Spring Spirit Assembly. Those are the photos there on the right. At the top, you can see the beginning of the last round of a fiercely competitive game of musical chairs. And that's Mrs. Carla Bosler on the left and Tristan Keith on the right. Spoiler alert, Tristan Keith won and had one of the most ostentatious celebrations of victory I've ever seen in my life. He was very proud of himself. His class really cheered him up. We had a lot of fun that day. And at the bottom right, that's Mrs. Huffman and I, who were pied as a result of a raffle that we used to help race. So that was a lot of fun, and our students and our teachers did a great job putting that together. I want to tell you, that's another thing that I love about middle school. When something like this goes on, generally, we don't plan it from the office. The teachers and the students plan it, and I absolutely love that because that helps us make sure that they're getting what they want and what they need. Of course, we also finished map testing, and I want to say hat-tap to Mrs. Amy Meyer for really taking the lead on that and creating a very, very complicated, intricate, but workable schedule. As you can imagine, there are a lot of considerations to make, and Mrs. Meyer does an excellent job of that. We were also able to celebrate our fourth quarter links. We have our spring. We have our spring dance that was originally slated to be on the back parking lot up here, but it turned out it was one of those unusual 50 degree days and a little overcast and we had had some rain. So we decided to move it inside and we went to the new gym, the big gym downstairs, which turned out to be a good thing because some of our students had never had a dance before, so they turned out in droves. And students alone, we estimate we had three hundred, which is double what we normally have at a school dance. But we had great supervision, a lot of teachers came out that night to help us out, and we had a good night. It was a lot of fun and we kids really enjoyed it. We also got to have a grade celebration that was just, gosh, last week, I guess. And Mrs. Jokers and Mrs. Merkbluff, who took the lead on that, bring our kids off to the community center. That's the picture you see on the left there. And again, they had an excellent time and every teacher who went out to help supervise came back and talked about how awesome our kids were. And you know, that's really important to me that we're going out to be a good representative of our school and I think our eighth graders are ready to accomplish that. So thanks to those eighth graders and thanks to those teachers that helped the program. And that's what's behind, so let's talk about what's ahead. Tomorrow, we are treating a dozen of our students to a pizza party at lunch. Those students have logged forty or more books in their reading log this year. And that's a dozen kids, but that's only one class. Only one teacher made this deal with me that I would buy them pizza. But now that, now that the news is out, I may, I may have to get into T-shirt wallet next year to make sure that we've got enough to cover the pizza for everybody. So we're treating two dozen, dozen kids tomorrow. End of year celebration on Friday, that's all gone campus, includes all of our kids and lasts pretty much all day. And then next week, finals begin. Invented in that final schedule is also a couple of award ceremonies that we like to have for our students, pop students in classes, also club awards, sports awards, things like that. We build those into the final schedule in hours that have already been tested. For example, we'll do a couple of hours of testing on Wednesday. And then when those hours repeat the next day and they're not tested, that will be the concern for them. So that they're not in scowl destruction testing. And then of course, the last day is next Friday, 1:00. Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Couple of things for you, Dr. Fleet, that sat at the stage for me a little while ago. I do want to let you guys know, we do have a senior party come on Thursday if any of you guys would like to come out and hang out with the seniors for a little bit. You guys are really welcome. And then also graduation practice Friday morning. Our TV starts at nine, I would assume, it's gonna be served somewhere between 11 and 12. And then graduation practice starts at 8:30 with the kids. I've asked Mr. Bosler to be there and so you guys can come and see the seniors and then spend a little bit of time with them. You guys are really welcome to be down at the gym. Does anybody have questions about graduation, about the night out?
We'll have parking, right? We'll have parking, so.
Yep. Mrs. Dallas has got signs printed out. She's had those printed out for like the last three weeks. So we'll have parking set up for you guys and we'll have ambulance parking and everything that we've had in the past. We should have everything ready to go. We've been down to the gym earlier today, working with Mr. Demash to get chairs situated and stage apps and we'll be working on it pretty hard for the remainder of the week. I think I've got script in a pretty good place, so Dr. Fleet was talking about her speech and just working on the script, trying to fine, fine tune these weeks and things this year, so we're working on some of those.
We're not talking at this, right?
Me too.
I can give you a part.
Thanks, I'm good.
No, we're good.
All right, and Mrs. Uspin was talking about, actually, we've got an opportunity to go out to her building today. And so I would be wanting to talk a little bit about that, but it's not actually in my presentation, my slide. But something that we're starting to do in the high school this year is starting a celebration for our students that are on track to graduate with honors. Next year, I want to record and say this, the night before graduation, this might be in, but we're going to have a celebration the night before graduation to recognize all of our students that are graduating with honors. So yes, we're gonna have a big event the night before graduation, which I know sounds absolutely crazy, but those students deserve the recognition. And a lot of times, we have the annual honor ceremony, but that group of kids really deserves just something extra and something special. So many of our students that write out a GPA that would qualify them for Latin honors, magna summa or cum laude status, we got with them this year and we wanted to take small little baby steps. So we reached out to those seniors that were on track, so we don't know anything definitively until after grades, the grading period closes and we have great final license week on Thursday. But we asked them something special to me. We asked them to identify someone that works for our district that made an impact on their life. And those students came back with just some absolutely amazing individuals and some absolutely amazing things that they said about the individual. So we actually got to make a surprise trip out to Bloom Sale today and surprising Mrs. Nelson out of Bloom Sale. But in all, we had over 50 students that we had an opportunity to recognize with this. And with those 50 students, we had thirty, I think it's two, and I counted thirty-nine different individuals that were part of our district that were represented. So it wasn't, him and I really took that piece and that was a lot of solace for us because just how many individuals made an impact for our kids and the number, and I think that that piece was really, really neat for me. When we set this up as a ceremony next year, this will be the time when those students actually get their honors medal and that individual will actually award them their honors medal. And then we'll have them have an opportunity to say something special about them. So it's gonna be a really neat opportunity just to give back and take credit for the idea. I can take credit for tweaking the idea. Mr. Schneidl gave us the idea whenever we were working on interviewing him for assistant principal position to talk about. They do that at Fox High School. And so we're gonna take it and tweak it to meet, to meet us and meet what we do here a little, a little bit better. But it's something really cool and something very, very special to me. It's been neat to see. I mean, we've had tears shed, we've had, I don't know how many, Mrs. Nelson gave that poor girl today, but it was, it was just so special. And we've had cooks, we've had custodians, I mean, it's just, it spans so many individuals. So it's been really cool and it's been a really neat experience. So we're gonna continue that in the future. We're excited about that piece. All right, on to the presentation. Couple of things that we had for you guys, we did whole prom, I mentioned that last month. And our prom king this year was Mr. Christian Keever. And our prom queen this year was Miss Serena Garcia. So both of those individuals who have celebrated at prom, it was a fantastic evening. I think probably as Dr. Mercer was talking about the middle school dance, probably the highest attended prom that I've been to in the last four years. We just had a heck of a bunch of kids that were there. They had a blast, they had a lot of fun, a lot of smiles. And we actually at one point ran an episode and I actually had to go to Dollar General and count them all so. So that tells you how many, how many kids and we were not anticipating that kind of crap. So that was really neat. Dr. Edison worked on coordinating our pre-prom assembly and bringing some amazing guest speakers to come in and just share some insight. And that's the top bill. And then actually on the, on the far right, we actually had a surprise guest that day. Sergeant Torres was there to present a very, very nice scholarship check to Izzy Bosler that provides her full tuition. And she's planning on attending University of Reserve next year in Columbia. And it was just a really neat moment. She had no idea when she walked by me at the moment, or she walked by me to get up on stage. She doesn't like surprises. And I said, how mad are you at me right now? And she just shook her head, she wouldn't say it worked. So I, I don't know that she really appreciated the surprising piece photo. It was a really neat moment. Her parents were there, lots of photos, and it was just a really cool thing. Down in the middle, I have to, I have to celebrate Mr. Paul Aaron's. We had our, you know, dress as the teachers, which rolled today. I had an opportunity to dress as Paul and Paul dressed as me for the day. So we had a lot of fun with that, or I had a lot of fun with Paul there and not. But it was a really neat day in the high school. We had Mr. Schwint and DeAndre Wilson switch places for the day. So it was just a really cool way to celebrate both the teachers, but also our students in the high school as well. So very, very excited about that piece. And down in the bottom left, we had our mock accident earlier this week. We want to thank Chief Bennett, our local EMS, and also here in fact, they actually even landed a helicopter out back and one of our students actually got an opportunity to go up in a helicopter and be dropped off over at the hospital. Was a really neat experience for that young lady. Obviously, the whole thing was centered around making good decisions and seeing what an actual scene would look like in the event of a, of a terrible accident. But that student also had an opportunity to be able to fly over her house and she kept away with her mom. And it was, it was just a pretty neat moment for her. And she carried me the whole way back about how cool it was as we drove back. So it was a really, really cool moment for her. So we want to thank all of those folks for putting that on. All right, several pieces here. Up in the top left, we have Kylie Clayton, who was our Elks student of the month. Down in the bottom left, we had Lana Kemper, who was our Rotary student of the month and she took time with her to the Rotary luncheon. We did have our Elks banquet. And so we want to thank the Elks Lodge for recognizing all of our seniors throughout this year and also the scholarship money that they gave to our seniors. Down in the bottom, we did bring back the variety show in this year, we did last year. We did have this, this year, Mr. Rooney and Mrs. Robertson worked really hard to bring it back. And actually, Mrs. Robertson actually sang. But our winning crew was Nathan St. Clair and Jacob Kirchner. And Nathan had a saxophone solo and Jacob played drums in the background for Nathan. So really, really neat opportunity to have the variety show back for our kids to be able to see that piece. And we also celebrated our retiring teachers that day at the variety show. We did have our positive officer girls, James and Kimber, Lindsay Crump actually had two, Maya Watson and Garmon Miller, who are our positive officer girls in high school. And then up on the top right, we have Kale Pomin, who broke a school record in the 400. She ran a, actually, she re-broke it again. She ran 59.3 that day. She re-broke it this weekend at districts and ran 59.18 in the 400. The previous record was a 59.07, I believe, was Aaron Dunsey back in 2006. So that record's been around for a while. Kale was just a phenomenally young lady, just smiled, very quiet, very humble, and she wore pictures in the park. So we definitely want to take an opportunity to celebrate her and her accomplishments. And more to come, we've got exceptional traffic this weekend. We've had several college signings the last couple of weeks and we have two more coming up still tomorrow. Over on the bottom left, Rudy Flea signed with Central Methodist University, continued his basketball career and education there at Central Methodist out of Pat. We had an amazing guest who is signing and going to be continuing his running and academic career at Maryville University. And then on the, on the far right, we had Zach Boyer, who is going to be continuing out at St. Charles Community College playing baseball. So congratulations to those three. We also have Nathan St. Clair that's signing tomorrow morning at Mineral Area College. He's going to join his brother and actually have a picture of his brother here in just a second. And then also Levi Weekend is also going to go out to MAC and run at MAC next year. And so both of those two boys are signing tomorrow morning. And I'll come back to Mia, Devon here just a second, it might be the next slide, Dr. Fleet. Nope, it's not, just one more. So the guy sitting on the, the top left, we, I've been working with Mr. White too and Mr. Rapp to get some pieces around the school. And they're, they're working really hard. They actually were making measurements for our tables here in the commons today. They actually had pieces out and they're, they're hopeful that that would be in. I was told maybe by graduation, we're gonna keep our fingers crossed. But what you see up in the, on the top left, if you guys have a chance this evening, I would encourage you guys to go down and check out the bench that's down in the seniors tier right now. It turned out absolutely amazing. And this has been something that we envisioned now for the last couple of years. Mr. Penny and I walked by some students that were literally laying on the concrete and we said, all right, we can do something better than that. And so we worked with Mr. Rapp and Mr. White to engineer and come up with something. They, they come up with that piece and also had put some LED lights in the inside that that shine very, very bright green, Paul Aaron's, very bright green, not a, not a blue, all green, green. Paul might have stolen my.
I was gonna say, I saw a different color and was wondering.
Paul might have stolen my remote yesterday and gone down and turned us onto blue. Just cause Paul might made some trouble. Down at the bottom left, Mrs. Gegg was talking a little bit about the scheduling snap. We held our rack through day, which Mrs. Bowman had about 40 art students out on the parking lot, out in the concession stand area that worked really hard at blazing their art projects. And they use some extremely high heat methods in order to do this. And that is what had us a little bit nervous with the elementary students being out there for field day. I think everything went good though. Mrs. Bowman, Mrs. Bowman said it was fantastic, it was extremely hot. I do, I do know that piece, but I think it was a lot of fun. I really, really enjoyed getting an opportunity to look through the pictures and just see our kids smiling and in their elements. And Mrs. Bowman just does a fantastic job. Actually, I have to go down, she's got two more flats that are gonna be going in the cafeteria here in the next couple of days. Well, one maybe here in the next couple of days before the seniors finish up. The other one, I think she's the next time I'm working, we're gone over the summer. But we're really excited about one of those flats, they look absolutely amazing. The Magmane Fair, I have to give credit to Mrs. Okowski. So I know there are elementaries, but we're talking a little bit about sending elementary students out there. If you looked really, really hard at that, they even went down to like 16, 17 months. And Mrs. Okowski invited my son to go out there. And so he had an absolute blast getting to sit on the tractor and getting to walk around and see all the animals that are out there. So I just want to thank, and I know I showed this at our faculty meeting, I just want to thank our faculty in the high school for always making not only me feel a part of the family, but also my family feel a part of the high school family. And so that was a really special moment for me and for my wife to get an opportunity to go out there. So that was something that was really cool. And then down at the bottom right, I was talking a little bit about all of those, that's actually all of those nominations for those individuals, the teachers, the students recognizing. That's been all laid out. So that's all 39 laid out on the table just to kind of get a good depiction of how many different individuals were recognized through that program. So really, really cool. All right, so Devon St. Clair, bottom left. Devon was a senior last year and Devon is now running for Mineral Area College. They finished second in the nation, runner-up in the nation in the junior college division three track championships this past weekend. So that was something really neat. He finished second in the nation in cross country and now second in the nation. And then his brother and Levi are both going to join him next year and run for Mineral Area College. So those days out there has a lot of really good things going, so we want to highlight them. The, the other three individuals are actually graduates from Valley High School as well. So all of those, all of those kids in that picture are frontier within our campus. So something really, really, really cool. Our athletic programs this spring have had just an amazing run at the, especially at the district level. Our ball team finished second in districts and qualified for individuals to go out to the state tournament in the last two days. Our softball girls upset the number one seed and beat the toe seed over in the district semifinals, went on to the finals game and had one tough inning. And after that one tough inning, blanked our pills the rest of the night. So we were right there with them. They played their hearts out, they finished second in the districts. We brought two, home two district runner-ups in those two sports. And then our girls track team this past weekend ended up winning a district championship down at Cape Girardeau. So a lot of success for our sports teams this spring, something that's been really neat. In the middle, I know that Dr. Fleet isn't gonna say anything, so I will. Marissa this past weekend, or actually the middle of last week, won the OBC in the jab one throw. And so that was something that was really neat. And then while we were at the retirement banquet, we guys, we were getting, our text messages were blowing up and Dr. Fleet had no idea what was going on. And Marissa had taken a picture and sent it out to a group of us that she was awarded the OBC athlete, freshman athlete of the year. So that's something that's really, really awesome. We definitely want to highlight and congratulate her and Dr. Fleet. And in the top left are our three sport athletes at high school. You can see that that is a huge number that we have that are participating in three sports, something that we're very, very proud of. Dr. Nix and I talk a lot about that and a lot about the success of those kids, not just focusing on one area or one sport, being so all around it. And that's something that I am extremely proud of. Our kids are involved, our kids are engaged, and they're not just focusing on one area, they're getting involved in multiple areas and multiple sports. And I'm a little biased, but I think that that's something that helps especially those kids that are moving on to the next level of participating sports, even if they go and they specialize in a sport, being so all around it, in my opinion, is something that is extremely important for our kids. And finally, our teacher of the month this month is Mr. Brock Pryler. And you can see our background, and our background actually hopefully is going to change tomorrow if there's something a little special that one of our juniors to put together. So I won't give a spoiler alert for that call, but you know, look out for a background one tomorrow. The teacher of the month, Mr. Pryler, the nomination this month says, "This teacher makes everything easy to understand, even though it's a hard class to teach. He goes into depth about every subject for each student. He wants us to succeed in life and gives us tips and gives us time to calm down in all of those threats at high school. He works countless hours with students, helping them and growing a bond with every single one of them. He makes us laugh, work with one another, and appreciate what we have. He absolutely deserves teacher of the month." I know that I, I just genuinely enjoy spending time with Mr. Pryler. Class is always thinking outside the box and figuring out ways to engage his students, whether that's building votes and testing the buoyancy of those votes during exploration and figuring out how many, how many weights the vote will hold up to, and you know, changing things from year to year and figuring out how to get kids to continue problem solving and think outside the box. So we just definitely want to celebrate and that'd be nice. Mr. Pryler and all of our teachers this year, I looked at that form, we had over 500 nominations for teachers by students this year that we were able to share back out to teachers. So that's something that really, really excites me, and I think it's awesome for our teachers to do this, they're doing a great job. That's all we have in high school. I thank you guys. If you guys have questions about graduation, it's a nice day to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that. So what I did, hang on. I have a better picture, so I'm going to, I'm going to take a moment to be the proud mama. She, for most people out there who know Marissa or don't know her, she qualified for NCAA Midwest Regionals. I think it's her and two other boys at CMO. So she's training with Coach, she competes next week. So if she makes it through and Coach feels like she has a good shot, she'll be doing the championships in Eugene, Oregon. So crush fingers would be appreciated. So there's just a cute little picture with both of her awards. So thank you for putting that on there.
She deserves that.
Yes. She works hard. Okay. And then the next item in the principal's report would be safety reports, but I do not think we have any because we're almost at the end of the school year. And that's the end of my report.
All right, thank you. Next, we have unfinished business. Under unfinished business, we have the MSBA Full Maintenance Service Agreement.
Um, yes. So we, when Dr. Lindsay was here, transitioned to an online system for our policies and administrative procedures. This is the agreement that the president, board president and secretary sign yearly. This is $3,479 for our annual membership, and we are trying to and going to over time add all of our forms to the system, so they'll come up as PDFs and people will be, will be able to access them easily. So I would ask you to approve this agreement so we can continue this great service for our, our community.
I make a motion to approve the Missouri School Board Association Full Maintenance Service Agreement effective May 1st, 2022 to April 30, 2023.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have new business. First item is the A-plus partnership plan.
While Mrs. Jury comes up, one other thing that I wanted to mention was yesterday, Dr. Boyd got an award. Mrs. Jury, do you want to talk about it and share? He was awarded the Southeast Principal of the Year? Is that correct?
Yeah.
So we got to surprise him. He's actually a part of the committee that was out delivering those awards. And so somehow or another, I don't even know how, but got him back here, got him back in the building, had, had his, had students from-
My wife was here.
Yes, his wife, his son. Yes.
That would be a good picture.
Yes, so it was a great day, so wanted to definitely recognize and thank him.
Okay. Jamie Durry, most of you guys know that. I'm here to talk about the St. John's High School A-plus partnership plan. We had a meeting on April 20th to review that, to review that plan. In doing so, in order for our school to participate in the A-plus schools program, the school must have a partnership plan, develop with cooperation with the advising of local business persons, labor leaders, parents, representatives of college and post-secondary vocational technical schools, with the plan then approved by the local board of education. So that was what that meeting was called out on the 20th, to help bring those stakeholders to the table. In that meeting, we had representation from the Career Center, vocational education. We had representatives from the St. John's High School Board of Education. We had community members, some that fit in naked, but we invited the circle clerk. We had representation from a local insurance agent and one of the local banks. Mr. Miller from Valley High School also attended. And then we also had faculty representation from St. John's High School. We had parent representation, and then we have student representation from each one of the classes. And the partnership plan talks about schools cannot function independently. The working relationship with the community, business, and post-secondary institutions is essential for the total educational process. That's becoming more prevalent in the world we live with the need for workers and trained skilled workers in our communities. This plan plans to specify mechanisms to receive information on an annual basis. It details the procedures that the school uses to identify students that are at risk to drop out of school. It outlines the counseling and mentoring services that are provided to our students. It addresses apprenticeship and internship programs. It contains procedures to retain and recruit volunteers in the school system. I'll briefly touch on those five requirements. The annual review again is what we did at the partnership meeting. That's what we talked about, data such as the schools gaining a report card, five-year graduate follow-up surveys. And later in my talk, I'll present on some of the statistics we have for students that participated in apprenticeship and intern programs. The school district also has programs in place to identify at-risk students. Some indicators, it's a long list, I won't read them all, but some students who are considered at risk for dropout include core attendance, frequent tardies, poor self-confidence, self-concept, delinquency or defying of school rules, health problems, or criminal or juvenile The school district and high school has 25 strategies to help intervene for those at-risk students. We have samples or examples of that include reading programs at the elementarys, care teams to help identify and develop intervention plans and strategies for those students. We have pride and pride recovery at the high school level. We have dragon fire at the high school level, which is a tutoring program. And again, the list is 25. If you look at the list, I would be happy to share it, but I won't read it. A lot of you probably know what we have. One program I want to talk specifically about, I don't know if Eric Boyer did this, but I did it this year, and I thought it was really, really awesome. I myself didn't do it, let me rephrase that. This is getting your early childhood special education coordinator reached out to me. I mean, I have kindergarten teachers who had quite a list of students who were at risk for retention. So between getting that list from the kindergarten teachers, seeing what the students need for which were very basic skills such as counting, letter identification, sight words. We developed an after-school door room outside of Dragon's Den with kind of specific skills to work with those students, all right? Plus, kids enjoyed it. We in the office found it very interesting when we saw a little bitty people coming in the office, because we're not used to little people. It just need to watch the kids working with the kids. Now, the third requirement is that we provide counseling at St. John's High School, and they can do that through the very model guidance program. In that counseling program, they work out the essentials for your plan, some practices as long as a grade, they do some at the elementary grade levels. We have students who go to the Career Center, if that's where they're interested in the 20s, and they're also the process of taking the test. Also offer job shadowing and internships as soon as available and meets the students' interest areas. Again, that fourth requirement that I already touched on a little bit are the apprenticeship and internships. I'll get to the numbers of those at the end of our presentation. One thing we started this year pretty intense, and it kind of filtered out a little bit toward as the year went on, but we had been working with the Southeast Economic Development Representative. I don't think that is completely stifled, but we are going to continue to kind of talk with them and see about actually having registered apprenticeships. That will actually help the workforce in our community as well, if we can get those established. And the fifth requirement is volunteering. The school district takes advantage of volunteers when we can, and we have different ways to recruit volunteers. We reach out through communication through the elementarys, we let it to the parents. Sometimes it's through organizations that we, as faculty staff and administration are involved in. Volunteers are important because they can help with things such as career inspiration, they can help with things such as job interview skills, and what, what needs to be, what qualifications are needed for certain areas and positions. And up since when is this, you need a two-year degree, four-year degree, basic job skills. So that's what community members need to be prepared for. On our A-plus program participation report for this year, for this school year, we have 25 ninth graders, there are six 10th graders, 54 11th graders, and 60 12th graders in the And we'll actually go Tuesday, Thursday, sorry, Thursday once we get the grades and all those things, we'll have the actual, we're going to have the A-plus certification evaluation. Do you have any questions?
Was that 25 first? Last year's numbers were sharing?
Eleven. So we picked up 14 this year.
And then the, that freshman number from last year, when we came, you saw?
Uh, it were 36 this year, it was 34 this year.
But we were at 11 last year.
Yes.
So we gained 25.
That's good.
So last year was difficult, getting kids involved, getting them signed up, getting them engaged, the A-plus program is very difficult. So seeing that growth from freshman year to sophomore year, we see a growth every year, but usually not like that. So that was something that's very difficult.
Good and needed.
Yeah. Fair enough.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the A-plus partnership plan as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the intent resolution on the general obligation bonds.
As you all know, I'm happy to share again that Prop SG passed. We are working with LJ Hart and Company, our financial company, on setting a timeline to actually receive portions. We probably won't take all 20 million at one time, but portions of that 20 million over the time of the construction and everything going on with the bond issue. We've been asked quite a bit when that's going to start, but it's probably going to be sometime next year, because there's lots of soil sampling, surveying. We're still working on the drawings. There's a lot that goes on before we can actually break ground. This intent resolution is meant to allow the district, who is incurring expenses associated with the bond issue, to pay itself back once we do obtain the general obligation bonds. I did put my, our best guess of $200,000 in the intent resolution. The reimbursement period would start after you approve it tonight. So any bills moving forward, starting from tomorrow on May 18th forward until we get the general obligation bonds, the, the district could reimburse itself. If we find, we get to that $200,000 and we have maxed it out before we get the bond funds, we'll bring another resolution back to you, and we'll provide detail to you as we go through the process on how everything's being spent. In the past, I believe it was through like a, an Excel sheet, we'll do a Google sheet so we can share it with you, and you can see how those funds are being spent. So we ask you to approve that, so the district can reimburse itself once we get the funds, which is probably going to be August.
Okay, I'll move to approve the intent resolution as presented, which shall be in full force and in effect on this 17th day of May 2022.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the MoCat resolution.
Yes. We are a member of a program called MOSIP, which is an investment opportunity for public school districts. MoCat is new to Missouri. They are in many states surrounding us and throughout the U.S. We've recently had, the person that I talked to is the retired chief financial officer from Jefferson City Public Schools. He is considered to be an expert in Missouri school finance. He is a representative for MoCat and is the one that Dr. Taylor and I have been talking to. MoCat is just an investment opportunity for the district. We could also explore the possibility of investing our bond funds with them to try to earn some interest as those projects would lay out and work out. That is not what this resolution is intended to do. This resolution basically allows us, allows the district to become a member of MoCat, MoCat, and explore investment opportunities with them. We typically make a large investment in January, from January to June. We haven't done that the past few years because the money is making more interest in our savings account than it has been in the market. In the past, we've explored, our only two options are First State Community Bank or MOSIP, because we're a member of MOSIP. This would give us the opportunity next year in January to look at the interest rates with MoCat. And there is no fee to join. I've been asked that question.
I'll make a motion to approve the Missouri Capital Set Asset Advantage Treasury Resolution as presented, which shall be in full force and effect on this 17th day of May 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Gettiger asked if we would take a roll call vote on this. David Boe, yes. Eric Bosler?
Yes.
Darryl and Diesel?
Yes.
James Kirchner?
Yes.
Jamie Ballou?
Yes.
Josh Gettiger?
I will abstain due to a potential conflict of interest with my employer, Ever Jones.
Thank you. And Martha Reesinger?
Yes.
Motion carries, 601. Next, in the new business, we have the construction manager at risk request for qualifications.
I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Taylor. He's become an expert on a CMAR.
I wouldn't go quite that far. Good evening, everyone. To begin the process of finalizing plans on all of our projects associated with Prop SG, there's a design plan build option, which is what we traditionally do here at St. Genevieve. I've talked to several superintendents, including Jason Hoffman, the retired superintendent, the entire chief financial officer at Jefferson City Schools, on how to best accomplish this, given our number of projects. They all have suggested we look at a construction manager at risk. So in doing that, policy FED, selection of a construction manager at risk, has definitive timelines that we have to follow. The first step in that timeline is the board of education announcing at an open meeting that we intend to go that direction. So that's what this is for. It's, it's getting the first step in a two-part process. The first part is a request for qualifications. I've been working on that. I have it for your review later this evening. The second part of that is a request for proposal. So the request for qualifications just asks construction managers at risk what their experience is, the projects that they've done. They get us that information. There are no costs or prices associated with that. They're not allowed to do that. Once the board of education has identified five or fewer, we will let them know, and then they will bring us a request for proposal, which will include costs. And at that time, we will, we will evaluate them on their request for proposal and hopefully identify the best one for our needs here at St. Genevieve. So I would ask that you approve the construction manager at risk process.
Is this an individual or a company?
It's going to be an individual that works for a company. Dr. Flea and I were invited by Sheriff Stoltzer out to the county jail. He had been working with Brock Miller, construction manager at risk. His name is Colin, can't think of Colin's last name. Just to kind of talk through the process and get our, get our heads to start thinking about what would be best for our district. I don't know, I think they're interested in putting in a request for qualifications. I'm not sure who else will be. Hopefully, we'll have a few, and that'll give the district some good options to choose from.
And Dr. Taylor, we, first of all, we've never done, had a position like this with other bond issues or, right? This is a new approach for the district, right?
It absolutely is. And the reason for that is the number of significant projects we will having, have going on at one time. I don't know how to best say this, but at times, not coming from an architectural background, it's difficult. When we ask architects for things or make suggestions, the architects will say, sure, you can do that. And then the cost associated with that is not really fiscally responsible. We need somebody with experience in that realm. That's the role that this construction manager at risk would fill. I really, I- I really, I have a lot of ideas and a lot of suggestions for our architects. Sometimes they need to look at me and say, "That's not a good idea because it's going to cost too much money." We're paying them, so they want to go out of their way to make us happy as well. So we need an intermediary in there, not to mention the increased costs of construction, being able to manage what the market is, when we should purchase items like steel. I've talked to a couple of superintendents that said they made their steel purchases upfront in order to lock in the price. They would be able to negotiate that better than I would.
So these are all things this, let me give the name, manager at risk would work with you, the maintenance head and everything, and just try to tie it all together nicely?
And come back to you and give monthly reports on the progress. They are, it's a significantly challenging amount of information to manage, and so having them there, having done it before, and knowing what to ask the architects for, and knowing what to ask the subcontractors for, so that they can organize that and bring it back to you, and be able to present it in a way that we all can understand it, bringing it down to layman's terms for us.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
And their focus will be on like real property, not like the security enhancements or the HVAC or things like that, you know, the gymnasium potentially, the early childhood center, those sort of things?
Correct. There are going to be components of HVAC that might be involved in that, but it is going to be the two gyms, the entryway to the elementary, Bloomsdale Entryway, all of the significant projects that are going to be stacked on one another. They're going to help us with how to put out the bids as packages that will best suit our needs. You don't want to, we've already talked to the architects about different scenarios and different portions of the district that are going to be out of commission and not accessible while these are going on, and how do we want to do that to best suit our needs and to still allow the district to be accessible to our students, our faculty and staff.
And then the selection of, I know you mentioned Brock Miller, so if this individual's chosen, does that mean that the general contractor will be Brock Miller's well, or?
Could be, but...
But it could be Stepper as well?
Absolutely.
Okay.
At that time, the request for proposal portion would come in, and Brock Miller would put in a request for proposal along with other companies, and those would be reviewed, and we would decide what the best route for the district to go is.
Where do you think you'll have somebody chosen, or are you getting your five?
So the request for qualifications and the identifying inappropriate construction manager at risk, I've got a couple of different scenarios that I need to talk to the board about. Hopefully, by the July board meeting or shortly after, we put a timeline down, and so the first step is the announcement that we're going to go this route, and then we have to publish for two weeks in the paper, and then there are some other timelines spelled out in the policy that we have to follow as well. So as I timed it out, I think it's going to be by the July board meeting or shortly after.
Dr. Taylor, correct me if I'm wrong, but a construction manager at risk would have our interest first, whereas a general contractor, even though we hired them, might have a dual interest in the project.
That's, yes, yes, sir.
We had the same, same thing when we built the funeral home. I don't know how we would have did without somebody.
Yeah.
If they had our best interest in mind, it took a lot of decisions off of us.
And the superintendents that I've spoken to said it's at risk for a reason. They've got some skin in the game as well, and it's in their best interest to look out for the district's best interest.
Any other questions?
Is there, there, I know the request offered, but how's the compensation typically work? Is it a certain percentage of the overall assets, or how do they typically?
It's a percentage of the overall project, and that part will be negotiated. Once the second step, the request for proposals, come in and we identify a company that we want to go with, then the negotiation starts on what that percentage is.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the, to approve and publicly disclose the board's intent to use the construction management of that risk CMAR method and the criteria it will use to select the CMAR.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we move on to adjournment to executive session.
Under the revised Missouri Statute 610.021, I motion that the Board of Education adjourn to a closed meeting with a closed record and a closed vote after a short break for the purpose of discussing and voting upon the following items of business: hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees; scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals; and individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, except that this exemption shall not apply to the names, positions, salaries, and lengths of service of officers and employees of public agencies once they are employed as such, and the names of private sources donating or contributing money to the salary of a chancellor or president at all public colleges and universities in the state of Missouri, and the amount of money contributed by the source.
Sir.
And we have a roll call vote?
Yes.
Do I call it?
Yes.
Oh, gosh. I'm learning. Okay, David Boba?
Yes.
Eric Bosler?
Yes.
Jerrilyn Diesel?
Yes.
James Kirschner?
Yes.
Jamie Baloo?
Yes.
Josh Gettiger?
Yes.
Martha Reesinger?
Yes.
Carries 70.
Wonderful.
Oh, thank you. And do we need now to make the motion to adjourn, or was that it? I mean, that was it, but do I put that time there?
That was it.
Okay.
817.